I'd like to call to order the Joint Committee on Housing and Committee on Tourism. Today is Friday, February 2nd at 9:51ish. We have one very exciting bill on our agenda, HB 2416 relating to taxation. This bill requires the Director of Taxation to develop and administer a one-time tax amnesty program that would waive criminal prosecution, fines, penalties, and interest related to general excise tax and transient accommodations tax for qualified owners who convert an eligible property to a long-term rental through a two-year written lease agreement, subject to certain conditions. Vice Chair, are you for the testimony?
Gary Suganuma, Department of Taxation, in support.
Good morning, Chairs, Vice Chairs, and Committee members. Gary Suganuma, Director, Department of Taxation. The Department stands on its written testimony, except I'd just like to add that the Department supports the Governor's initiative to address the state's affordable housing needs, and the Department is able to administer the bill as currently drafted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Blake Oshiro, Office of the Governor, in support.
Good morning, Chairs, Members of the Committee. Blake Oshiro, Senior Advisor for the Governor. We thank you for scheduling this bill, for hearing. We're here in strong support of the measure. You have our written testimony. If you don't mind, I'll just briefly summarize. As the Governor stated during his State of the State, housing remains one of his top priorities. While he is always currently trying to work aggressively towards building new housing, he's also looking at the existing stock and seeing whether there's a way to convert some of that into housing. He came up with this innovative idea to try and see if we can do some kind of conversion by creating an incentive program, by getting rid of some of the tax burdens that some of the owners may feel. And so that's why we proposed this bill. I'll be available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Tamia Machika, Tax Foundation of Hawaii, with comments on Zoom? Nope. Nope. Okay. Julia Estigoy, Individual in Opposition? No, not here. Okay. Angela Melody Young, CARES, in support on Zoom? I see her.
I'm here.
Hi, Angela. Go ahead.
Angela Melody Young, testifying in strong support on behalf of CARES. And so a tax amnesty, if that's how you pronounce it, can be defined as a limited time offered by the government to a specified group of taxpayers to pay a defined amount in exchange for forgiveness of a tax liability, including interests and penalties relating to a previous tax period, as well as freedom from legal prosecution. In a few jurisdictions, this tax law in regards to Airbnbs is a strategy in real estate to help mitigate rent him income tax by offsetting earned income with real estate losses. Basically, it's a way to reduce tax burden. In a few jurisdictions, the agreements provide several layers of confidentiality to shield Airbnb operators and occupants from oppressive laws. The government has already limited Airbnb so much, and Airbnb has helped middle-class families, immigrant families, families that struggling two or three jobs, and Airbnb has had to close operations unless it's long-term. So how can we provide equity, equity leveling out the playing field, right? So we're in this new generation where we have a very evolved society. Things are not like the previous generation, from immigration and race to foreign policy to tax policy, and the scope of government to student loan forgiveness. The IRS has a forgiveness program for hardship. Society is in an era where we're making laws and policies that are not oppressive, and these differences are reflected in generational policy choices. And so that's why we're in strong support of this policy, because it is advocating for non-oppressive laws. And in August 2022, the Biden Administration, after years of grassroots organizing, tried to get a student loan forgiveness program along with the DOE. And the legal authority is the COVID-19 Heroes Act. Under this original program, $20,000 of loan forgiveness can be pursued by Americans who make less than $25,000 a year. Although it was not legally sound the first time around, the administration tried again, and now it's enacted as a safe plan. So we are all for laws that are not oppressive and helps to create equity. Thank you.
Thank you, Angela. Just for everyone's purpose, if you want to testify on this matter, we're trying to limit it to two minutes, please. Is there anyone else in the audience that wants to testify on this matter, HB 2416? Anyone on Zoom? Chair, seeing none.
All right, Members, any questions for the testifiers? Majority Leader, Nakamura.
Thank you, Chair. I have a question for the administration, either DOTAX or Mr. Oshiro.
Might we both?
Sure. Is there sort of a calculation of what this tax benefit would end up being for a typical person who wants to sell their home for this purpose?
So in terms of figuring out a calculation, so for the amnesty part, that would just depend on, you know, how much tax liability the person seeking amnesty has, and the amnesty would just be waiver of penalties and interest and not the principal amount of tax. In terms of...
I'm sorry, the tax would still be?
The tax would still be due and owing, yes.
Okay.
We'd collect that. The waiver, the amnesty, just principal and interest. On general excise tax and TAT related to amounts collected during the time the property was used as a short-term or as a transient accommodation.
That 10-year window?
Correct. Correct. In terms of the capital gains exclusion, that one again is kind of hard to determine because it just depends on how much the property appreciated or how much profit is being made.
Do we have an estimate as we move this bill along, what that general number might be that we're looking to not receive now moving forward?
Yes, we have a revenue impact. For the amnesty part, it's indeterminate, mostly because, I mean, we just don't know who is out there hiding from us. For the conveyance exemption, 1.2 million loss in fiscal 2025 and 2.5 million in a loss in 2026. For the capital gains exemption, $6.3 million loss in 2025 and a $12.6 million loss in fiscal '26.
And then the G E T T A T?
Again, that would be the amnesty part that's indeterminate.
Okay. And then, so the, I'm sorry, can I ask one more question? The homeowner will then sell the, or the person who's renting the TVR would sell the property to, if it's over 3 million, sell it to someone with a two-year lease?
Yeah, so the intent is to transition short-term rentals to longer-term housing. So with regard to the conveyance tax and the capital gains benefit under the sale, the bill has a requirement that the buyer has to provide a sworn statement, basically that they're purchasing the property for their principal residence, and that they'll stay there for not less than two years, and they cannot own any other real property as well. So that gives some kind of assurance that they are buying it to live in.
Okay. Was there something in there about the $3 million would be the?
It's going to be limited to properties of $2 million or less.
For a first-time homebuyer?
Yeah.
Pretty much buying a $2 million property?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Rep. Onishi.
Yeah, I have a follow-up to that, to the buyer issue. Do you have a definition for indirect? It says here does not have a direct or indirect ownership interest in a qualified short-term vacation rental property, or does not have a direct or indirect ownership interest in any other real property. What's the definition of indirect?
There is no definition in the bill at the current time.
How would you define indirect then? I mean, you're going to come up with the rules, right?
That's correct.
Yeah. So how would you define indirect interest?
I think if you maybe own it through a state, or it's part of a trust, or something where you're a beneficiary, you're still not directly owning it, but you actually are a beneficiary of it.
So you would qualify?
Yeah, so many, many properties are actually put in trust. And so actually, the trust is the owner, even though there's actually one beneficiary. So it's an indirect ownership. It's not a direct.
Okay, but then they would qualify to buy that property?
No, the buyer cannot have an indirect or direct ownership interest in the property.
Okay, so what if it's somebody's fiancee?
Right now, it's restricted to not, the buyer cannot be a family member, and you bring up a good point. I guess we could, we could expand the prohibition to cover that as well. But yeah, the intent is not to sell it because then there's a higher chance that it's not a real transaction, right?
Well, but there's no definition, right? What if it's a second cousin or third cousin or, you know?
Yeah, I mean, we're amenable to including those definitions and making it clearer.
Well, I mean, you want us to pass this, I mean, we need to know who's going to be able to qualify, right? I mean, because, I mean, A, you can sell it to somebody who's your best friend, right? If they don't have property.
And in theory, we wouldn't have too much of a problem if they were an existing STR, and they're now converting it to an owner occupant, less than $2 million, first-time homeowner, they're going to stay there for two years. We know that those kind of things, even though that's not the ideal situation that we're trying to get towards, there's enough guardrails that still get us towards the goal we want, which is more homes in the housing market and stock generally.
Well, I'm not sure about that, because I could sell my property to you, Blake, with the understanding in two years, I'm going to buy it back from you, right?
Yeah, but then at that point, the capital gains would kick back in.
For you.
To the extent there is gains, to the extent there is gains.
Yeah, but I mean, still, it might be worth. I'm sorry?
And there has to be gains as well, like it could be the same value. So you might not.
Could be the same value.
Exactly.
I just want to make sure that nobody's going to game this, right?
And that's what we're trying to do. So really, a sale to a friend or a sale to a second cousin, I don't know that that's so much a problem, as long as it's legitimate. The second cousin or friend doesn't have a home, will be living in the home as their...
No, I'm talking about down the road, right? After the two years.
Yeah.
I mean, right? I mean, we had developments here that were supposed to be workforce housing that didn't have all the stipulations. As soon as they got control of the property, they started renting it.
Yeah, so we put in a two-year requirement for them to live in. You're free to adjust that as you, as you please, but if you make, the longer you make it, I guess it provides less incentive or flexibility for the buyer, so.
Well, I mean, I remember when we did state housing projects, it was a 10-year moratorium, right? So within the 10 years, you sold it back to the state at, I think, a 5% gain was the max. You know, I, I mean, to me, those are the kinds of guardrails that maybe, you know, need to be put up.
Yeah, and we're open to any of those things. If there are particular concerns about abuses, I think for the Governor, his main thrust behind all of this is, he just wants to try something new, see how it works. It's a very short window for people to do this, because it's only from July 1st of '24 up until December 2025. So in that year and a half, it's trying to see how many people participate. If at some point we see a string of abuses or anything else, then I think we're hopeful that DOTAX would have some authority to issue tax directives or the things that are necessarily clamped down.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Chair, quick then.
Okay, so I'm just casually walking over to buy my $2 million starter home at 7% interest, and my monthly payments are about eight grand a month, so, but, so I'm excited. But I have to sign this affidavit under penalty of perjury that I must immediately occupy. So what does immediately mean, and how do we check?
Yeah, so, I mean, you don't have to sign it. It's just if you're purchasing it from a seller that wants to avail themselves of the benefits under this measure, I'm sure they would want to sell it to someone that's willing to sign it. In terms of checking, you know, we do have a requirement for a sworn declaration, right? The buyer doesn't own any other property, is going to live in it for two years. In the case of a conversion of a rental to a long-term rental, we require the provision of a lease, a written lease, for at least two years. So there are ways for us to, I guess, keep them honest, so to speak, and then on the back end, if we later on find out they violated it, that we can, we can undo this and impose the taxes.
But would we then go back and, let's say they didn't live in the house, we then go back and impose the penalties and also charge them with perjury? We take them to court for perjury?
Well, I guess theoretically, yes. I mean, if, if the buyer is submitting a sworn statement, that's an option that would be.
Well, I mean, theoretically, but would we actually, like, what's the point of having them sign the affidavit if we wouldn't take them to court?
That'd be up to the Attorney General's office. We would need to refer.
And I, I think what it does is it provides prima facie evidence that if they haven't done what they said they're going to do, then the tax liability would attach to them, right? And as we all know, tax liability stays with you until you die. And so maybe they, we find out three or four years later that they've lied and they signed an affidavit, but the tax liability would still apply.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Vice Chair, are you?
I guess I want to follow up on some of Rep. Onishi's questions on gaming the system. How come there isn't a declaration from the seller that they were operating a short-term rental, that they qualify to be eligible to get these benefits? Like, can anyone say they were operating a short-term rental and then be eligible to not pay capital gains tax?
The bill right now says that the Director of Taxation can't, you know, provide any forms that's required. And so that's certainly something that could be substantiated before, because they would have to update, to the extent that they weren't filing taxes and they were hiding their short-term rental income, one of the requirements is they have to concurrent with all of their filings. So they have to basically disclose to us.
But there's no, I mean, they could say they were operating a short-term rental for 10 days, and they've really been doing it for the last 10 years. How do you verify? I mean, you can't even find them now. So how do you verify what they're telling you is true? And then they're going to get 15 million, or the program is going to give $15 million of tax breaks to...
They're going to have to come up with some kind of proof. We're not going to just take their word at it. So whether it's documentation from a short-term platform or actual payments received by them during the time it was a short-term rental, but the amnesty only applies to periods of time when they were short-term rental. If it's a sale, there is no amnesty on the sale. They owe, they have to concurrent with their taxes in order to benefit from the, from the capital gains and the conveyance tax benefits. So there is no amnesty there. So if we're just talking about the amnesty portion, then yes, they would have to substantiate the periods of time that they operated as a short-term vacation rental and didn't pay taxes, so that we can determine what their tax liability is.
Okay, but there's...
And they do that by amending their returns or filing returns.
Okay. Do you guys have any idea of who the capital gains and conveyance, the benefits are going to go to? Are these Hawaii residents or are these out-of-state residents?
Sellers.
Yeah. Who are the sellers?
It could be both, I guess.
Yeah.
We don't have any idea of percentage of owners that are running short-term rentals? I mean, my, my, my thought is that these are mostly out-of-state individuals that we're giving $15 million of tax breaks to.
Yeah, I mean, the, if the HERO study is right, STRs, maybe about 30% of them are owned by out-of-state addresses, based off of that. The Governor does plan, as he stated in his State of the State, to ask for many out-of-state residents to convert their STRs back into permanent housing to help our housing market. So I, I agree with you, it is giving them a tax break, and it's not ideal, but we do need housing, and so this is one of the ideas the Governor has to put existing housing back into the housing stock.
What, what would it take to just go after these individuals from your department's point of view? Why can't we just go collect these taxes?
Well, we could certainly collect the taxes. That doesn't make more housing available.
But I mean, it gives us more revenue.
Yes.
Which we can put into the Rental Housing Revolving Fund or any other fund to build housing.
That's correct. That's part of the challenge, and that's why the revenue estimate on the amnesty part is indeterminate, because kind of you just don't know what you don't know. So if they're hiding from us, there's a reason why we're not going after them.
Okay. My last comment is that this committee on Wednesday heard a bill to just allow counties to phase out short-term rental use. Why wouldn't that be better solution without costing us any revenue dollars to just phase out the use?
I think as the Governor stated in State of the State, if there's any reasonable STR bills that pass the legislature, he is willing to sign them. And so if that bill makes it, then I think he's definitely open to it. That bill has been around for several years and not passed yet, so if this is the year it passes, great.
We could have used your testimony for that bill then as well, but I appreciate it. Thank you, Chair.
One quick follow-up. So for DOTAX, I remember a few years ago, when we were trying to address the short-term vacation rental issue and the people not paying taxes, both TAT and excise tax, that didn't we give DOTAX positions to go to specifically research and pursue people who weren't paying their taxes or weren't reporting?
Yes, it's something that we actively look at. We have a special enforcement section, I think you're referring to, and that's one of the things they do. of the things they do, right? They do cash economy and also they've been focusing in on short-term.
So what has been the result of that? I mean, do you have information, like how many people you guys have caught? What has been the outcome of those properties? How much have we collected? What have you done with that money?
The annual report that we submit every year to the legislature, so we just did one at the end of last calendar year, it has the dollar figures for amounts collected from these short-term vacation rentals by a special enforcement section. Sorry, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but they do track that data.
Okay, so it's your report to the legislature?
Yes.
On that specific issue?
The annual report is a comprehensive report of tax collections and it does include a section with special enforcement section and their work trying to catch these short-term vacation rental violators.
Okay, thank you.
I have a quick question, sorry. So theoretically, could somebody file an amended TAT for a previous period right before they sell the property and then qualify, say a non-short-term rent, or anybody's house? They could file an amended TAT, say my cousin stayed with me and I charged him some money to stay there, and then sell the property and then be exempt from capital gains on the sale?
I mean, okay, so the way it works is to provide assurance that it is legitimately a conversion or a sale of a TA. There is a requirement that the, there is a requirement that the eligible property must have been used as a transit accommodation from January 1, 2023 to June 30, 2024. And so the thought there was that, to avoid exactly what you're talking about, someone kind of setting it up to get the tax benefits. And so that's where we, to ensure that it is an existing TA that is being converted, that's where we put that requirement.
Could they, could they, what if they still filed an amended return after the fact? Said, oh, we forgot to file our TAT, but here's our January 2024.
Still wouldn't qualify for amnesty.
They wouldn't. Oh, no, but what about for a conveyance tax on the sale of the property for the waiver of conveyance?
On the sale of the property, you would have to concurrent with all taxes owed.
Yeah, so they could...
Tax, G, T, T, A, T, yes.
So...
We would require them to amend and provide accurate tax reporting information to us at the time.
Well, I, just hypothetically, they could say one week's day in January from my cousin, I'm, now I'm paying my GE and my TAT. I was a short-term rental in this period and then they would be exempt.
Anyone, I guess, could try to fabricate that, but there are ways to try to get them to prove and confirm that they were in fact using it as a TA before the sale.
Okay. And then for the value figures you showed on the potential loss of tax revenue, how many units were you folks projecting to get to those numbers?
For the conveyance tax, just about 500. And I guess it would be the same for the capital gains, the 18-month period.
And then what's the estimate then for essentially loss of cost, lost of tax revenue per unit created? Do you have a sort of a dollar estimate of what, what would the state be losing for each of these units?
If they were still being operated as a rental?
No, as far as if, if we're losing, I didn't write down all your values there, but if we're losing $20 million in tax revenue to create 500 units or whatever your numbers were, do you folks have an estimate sort of per unit on what this, essentially the state subsidy would be for the creation of these units?
I don't.
Okay. And I can, I can, I can double back and look at your numbers after and see if I can work backwards, but, okay. Majority Leader Nakamura.
Just a clarification. So after the two-year lease period is up, what happens to, then the, the landowner can then go back to transient vacation rental?
Yes.
Yeah.
And so the two-year period, how is that determined? Because I'm a little concerned that the rebuilding of permanent housing on Maui will take a little longer because of the infrastructure needs that, that ramp up, that period from, we're all sort of in conceptual plan thinking right now, to installing infrastructure, to getting financing and then develop, constructing long-term homes, that it will be longer than this two-year period. Is, has any thought been given to potential extension of that time period?
Yeah, I think we're definitely open to, if the legislature thought a longer period of time was more prudent, we're definitely open to that. I think the initial thinking was the two-year window was kind of in alignment with where the governor was in terms of where he saw a real ramp up in terms of building new housing. And so he felt like if we had an initiative that's kind of opening up existing stock and then at some point we'll have a bunch of new ones, then we don't need this program about the existing stock as much anymore. But if we, the bill were to be changed to three years or four years or something, so there's more of an overlap, I think we're fine. The question for us is just going to be the, the revenue impact, right, and that was why we kept it relatively short.
Thank you.
Members, we do want to try and wrap this up and we'll have more conversation later, but Rep. Onishi.
So this is a statewide program, correct? So do you guys have any figures on your estimate for Maui and Lahaina?
We don't have anything that narrowed down yet.
Members, any final questions? All right, that said, I think we can go... Yes, we will take a very quick recess. For... And Tourism Committee hearing. So the intention here with Bill 2416 is to defer this till next Friday at 9:50 a.m. And I just want to say, I do appreciate the governor and DOTAX's efforts here to try and come up with out-of-the-box solutions. Clearly, I think from the questioning here, the bill needs some work. So the hope is when we'll come back next Friday with possibly some, you know, maybe a proposed HD1 or some proposed amendments that we can, we can discuss to make the bill more palatable. But yeah, so thank you, we'll defer till next Friday. At 9:50 a.m. in room 312, yeah. I think we're okay. All right. All right, so no further business, this hearing is... I'd like to call to order the Housing Committee hearing for Friday, February 2nd. It is 10:24 and we're in room 312 here. Sorry, would you mind closing the door? It's a little loud. All right, we have a fair amount of items on our agenda and that last hearing took a little bit longer than expected. And I failed in the last hearing to read through our testimony time limits here, so we're going to be a little bit stricter on this one in a two-minute time limit. So in order to allow as many people to testify as possible, two-minute time limit per testifier. Because morning hearings must adjourn prior to the noon floor session, not all testifiers may have the opportunity to testify. In that event, please know that your written testimony will be considered by the committee. Please keep yourself muted and your video off while waiting to testify and after your testimony is complete, for those on Zoom. The Zoom chat function will allow you to chat with the technical staff only, please use the chat only for technical issues. If you are disconnected unexpectedly, you may attempt to rejoin the meeting. If disconnected while presenting testimony, you may be allowed to continue if time permits. Please note the House is not responsible for any bad internet connections on the testifier's end. In the event of a network failure, it may be necessary to reschedule the hearing or schedule a meeting for decision-making. In that case, an appropriate notice will be posted. Please avoid using any trademarked or copyrighted images and please refrain from profanity or uncivil behavior. Such behavior may be grounds for removal from the hearing without the ability to rejoin. All right, that said, thank you all for being here this morning. We'll jump right in. First on the agenda is HP 1760, relating to state finances. This allows HHFTC or a county to establish a bond recycling program authorized by federal law. Allows HHFTC or a county to secure a line of credit or other instrument of indebtedness for the bond recycling program. And allows the Department of Budget and Finance and HHFTC to enter into an agreement with the county for bond recycling. Vice Chair for the testimony.
Dean Minakami, HHFTC in support.
Morning Chair, Vice Chair, Dean Minakami, the Secretary of the Hawaii Housing Finance Development Corporation. We stand on our comments, supporting this measure and offering an amendment available for any questions.
Thank you. Louis Alavaria, Director, BNF. Nope. Alice Lee, Council Chair. Pamela Tompap, Maui Chamber of Commerce in support. Stanford Carr, Stanford Card Development in support. Angela Melody Young cares, is she still on? I don't see her. Okay. Anyone else wish to testify on this matter, HP 1760?
Chair. Members, questions? I have a question for Dean. So BNF and their testimony, and unfortunately, they're not here to elaborate, but they had concerns around page nine of the bill, which calls for essentially, as I understand it, tracking of the recycled bonds and their issuance. So could you, they stated that since the counties would be doing some of this, they didn't feel like they could be doing the tracking. So could you just walk us through a little bit how that tracking works and whether we could remove, say, BNF from the tracking or remove that section entirely, how that would affect the program?
Under the bill, either HHFTC or a county has the authority to establish a bond recycling program. So the provision on page nine just requires that the county report to BNF and to HHFTC basically the status of their bond recycling program, you know, how, what bonds, what they've used recycled bonds for. So we think it would be beneficial to have that information, but we can work with BNF on their concern.
Okay, that sounds good. Members, other...
Just one more, one question, like what are we, what are we looking at as far as like more projects for bond recycling?
Yes, basically what happens with recycled bonds is many times bonds are issued to finance a project. But sometimes some developers use the bonds just for interim construction and then when they convert from interim financing to permanent financing, they find a lower cost source of financing such as a HUD program, for example, they use that to pay off the bonds. Right now, when they pay off the bonds, see after just two years, the bonds are just, they're extinguished and, you know, that they're paid off, that's it. The bond recycling program, when the bonds are paid off, the state could reissue the bonds. They wouldn't be the same as private activity bonds, but there will still be a tax-exempt form of financing, so there'd be a lower interest rate that we can offer to developers. It wouldn't be paired with low-income housing tax credits, but it still would be another source of financing for developers for affordable housing.
And there's a demand for, I think there's a demand for it? Okay. Okay, thank you, thank you, Chair.
All right, thanks. Members, any further questions? All right, the next item on the agenda is HP 1761, related to housing, authorizes HHFTC to issue bonds for housing project infrastructure and finance the development of regional state infrastructure projects. Vice Chair for the testimony.
Dean, don't go too far, you're up again. You're first on the list for both of these, so...
We stand in support in this measure.
Thank you. Mary Alice Evans, Office of Planning and Sustainable Development in support.
Aaron Sodergal for the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development. We stand in our written testimony in support.
Thank you. Craig Nakamoto, HCDA in support.
Francy Markert, HCDA.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify on this matter, 1761? Chair seeing none.
Members, any questions?
Just a quick question for Craig.
Vice Chair, you?
Yeah. As far as the infrastructure is concerned, who's going to own the, oh, sorry, I meant Dean, sorry, Dean. Who's going to own the infrastructure if it's like wastewater treatment plants or...
We're actually looking at this bill in conjunction with improvement districts. So a couple of years ago, we, we received approval from the legislature to form improvement districts to upgrade infrastructure. So this would be, could be used in conjunction with an improvement district where we would undertake improvements to an area and assessments from, to the property owners, we used to pay down the bills. So we're not necessarily looking at a large-scale project like a wastewater treatment plant and be more, say...
Like sewer roads or something like that?
Right, yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you, thank you, Chair.
Members, any further questions? Seeing none. Next item on the agenda is HP, oh, sorry, Rep. Onishi.
You know, that, sorry, if you could come back up here. So we have certain provisions in law where a developer, and if there is no sewage system, a sewage system has to be built. So, I mean, I think it goes back to that issue, right? You got a development of 50 units or more, it requires, if there's no sewage system to hook up to, the developer has to build a sewage system or the county has to build it or some entity.
Right, and I think in most cases, improvement districts should be set up and run by the county because in many cases, this is county infrastructure that has to be upgraded. We would only look at setting an improvement district, establishing one if it benefits state properties. And even then, we would encourage the counties to try to facilitate establishing an improvement district first. Because really, it is, it would be more efficient for a county to establish an improvement district than the state.
But it could be the financing of that improvement.
Yes, yes, that's what the improvement district is for, is to establish a means of financing for the improvement.
Yes, so this would be utilized?
Bonds, bonds could be utilized, yes, to form, to fund the financing.
And the bond, it would be to the county, to the county to fund it?
It would be, the bonds would be to the state and the state would use the proceeds from the assessments to pay down the bond.
Okay.
Thanks, Rep. Onishi. Members, any further questions? Seeing none. Next item on the agenda is HP 2514, related to teacher housing, establishes the teacher home assistance program to be administered by the Hawaii Housing Finance and Development Corporation to provide housing vouchers to certain teachers who are employed by the Department of Education and commit to teach at hard-to-fill schools and charter schools for no less than five years and appropriate money to do so. Vice Chair for the testimony.
Keith Hayashi, DOE with comments. No one from the DOE, okay. No one from the DOE. Okay, Dean Minaconni, HHFTC.
As Chair, Vice Chair members, we support the intent of this measure. We do have concerns about whether we could implement the program because our programs must comply with fair housing law. We're not sure if we can give preference to teachers. And we do note that the DOE does have statutory authority to provide a teacher housing program, so they might be better, better positioned to run this program.
Thank you. Chris Coffield, Democratic Party of Hawaii, in support, nope. Malia Souchia, individual in support. Brian Starkey, sorry, I mispronounced that, individual in support. Joyce Hayes, individual in support. Angela Melody Young from CARES in support. Anyone else wishing to testify on this matter, HP 1514, 2514, excuse me? Oh, go ahead. Yeah, come up, please, yeah, please say your name. Okay, wait, come say it in the microphone, just in case there are people on Zoom.
Hi, Sarah Tochiki, I'm a teacher from Kauai, a member of HSTA. In, speaking in support of this, we are hemorrhaging teachers, and especially in our most vulnerable communities, where housing is really expensive. On the island of Kauai, it is probably one of the most expensive places to live. We have 30-plus billionaires who are buying houses and making their fortresses. And we have to be able to provide teachers for our students. You know, there's a lot of bills that go through here about building fancy buildings, buying computers for students, curriculum, et cetera. But really, if we didn't have any of those buildings and we didn't have any computers, we didn't have anything else except for a teacher and students, there would be learning. And the teacher is the most important for, in a school campus, for what is happening because they spend the most time with the kids. And so if we are looking at ways to keep our teachers, especially those on a long-term basis, to keep them here to teach our students, those who are born and raised here, who are going to need places to live, that we really need to take care of them and finding creative solutions. You know, I hear a lot as a teacher in the DOE, well, that's, we can't do that because policy XYZ says, or this is too hard to manage, therefore, we're not going to do it. Just to buy a pencil for my students requires about five steps to buy pencils. And so I know it may seem like, well, this was going to be a lot to have to figure out, but we need to do something creative to keep our teachers. Because really, especially those who are in the most vulnerable areas, like this says, in our charter schools that are protecting O'Leah Hawaii, we really need to make sure that the teachers stay. And so I like that it is for teachers who are here for five years or more. And I guess the last thing I'll say is, this is not just for, I think, I think sometimes we think it's for educators who are moving here from the continent to come here. But like myself, I was born and raised here on Oahu, but I moved to Kauai. And when I first moved there, I was living in a garage and paying $1,300 a month, which was more than one of my paychecks to live in a garage. And so anything to help keep teachers where they're at in their schools, because we know that they're going to be best serving those students if they're there for more than a year or two, because they can't afford to live wherever they're at. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this matter, 2514? Okay, seeing none, Chair.
Members, any questions? I have a question for HHFTC. You know, on the, you said that you folks, that the Fair Housing Act could potentially restrict your ability to offer this program. Would DOE have the same restrictions under fair housing, or could they have more flexibility to provide funding for teachers?
We believe so, because in that case, it'll be housing basically for their employees. So, yes, we believe that they, they could give preference to teachers.
Okay, thank you. Members, any further questions?
I have some questions. I have some questions for you. Sorry, I can't remember your name. Yeah, come on. I promise not to ask super tough questions to you.
That's fine. I teach middle school band.
Okay, so. So I don't know if you're aware of this, but HHFTC told us that the legislature passed a law already, HRS 302A-832 and 833, which the legislature mandates DOE to create teacher housing. You aware of that?
I am.
Okay, do you know what they're doing?
They're, they're building these large places, well, should be building, large places.
But are they?
No.
Oh, I didn't think so, but it would be nice for them to show up and explain what they were doing, right?
It would. I will say, I will say to that, though, that vouchers make it flexible for our housing situations. Because if you are a family and you have two kids, you're not going to want to necessarily live in a place that is a small little apartment, it's probably not going to be big enough. And I know, we, on Kauai, we have a lot of actually great plans in the works by, by our folks for teacher housing. It's probably best for those who are first starting out in their careers. And we're looking at educators who have been in their careers for five years or more, who we want to establish families and stay in the communities and add to the communities. Because a teacher's not just, yes, in the school, but it's also what they add to the community. And so I think it's important for us to consider vouchers to ensure that we can have that flexibility and not just living in, in a communal space. Not that I don't want to live with my colleagues.
Got it. Thank you so much for your testimony.
Rapanishi.
Yeah.
Am I staying?
Yeah, I just wanted some clarification. So as I read the bill, a teacher who would qualify has to be, has to have taught in Hawaii for at least one year. But they have to make a commitment for no less than five consecutive years. So would, what's your thought in terms of if a teacher decides not to stay the five years? Should the state go after that teacher to get the money back?
That's a tough question, because I, we are hemorrhaging teachers. So at our school, there was a couple that was hired, and they were hired right at the beginning of the school year and they already have left. So I do think, though, that this will incentivize our local kids, who are born and raised here, to come back here to be able to live, and they will have more of a stake in the community. What I do envision is just, you know, I don't know why I want to solve the world's problems, but what I do envision, and I was talking to somebody else about this, is Swiss cheese method. Where you cut a slice of Swiss cheese, it's got a lot of pukas in it, it's got a lot of holes. But if you look at a block of Swiss cheese, you can't see any of those holes all the way through. And so maybe in that first year, the housing that is supposed to be built by the DOE, which I won't comment anymore on that, that housing can take care of those educators who are first starting out, so we're not having to go after them. But really, at our school, somebody who's been there for three years is going to stay for 10 years. And once that educator passes that three-year mark, they're, they're pretty set. So that, that initial housing maybe could help cover that. And then this program could then kind of carry them through to them as they work up their way on the steps and the pay scale, that then they can maybe afford housing on their own. It's a, it's a, I guess, an emergency parachute to prevent the teachers from leaving.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Chair, you.
How many times have you used the Swiss cheese analogy in the classroom?
Multiple times. I've also used it with gun control. I mean, if you think about it, we, there's not one solution. We, as educators, are always differentiating for our students. One lesson's going to work with one student and not with another, and, and that's the skill set that you're paying these vouchers for.
We appreciate you. Thank you so much for being here.
Sarah is one of the star teachers on Kauai, which is, you can see why she is. All right, members, any final questions on HP 2514? Seeing none, we'll move on to HP 1833. Relating to the Rental Housing Revolving Fund, this appropriates funds into and out of the Rental Housing Revolving Fund to provide loans or grants for mixed-income rental projects or units in mixed-income rental projects for qualifying, qualifying individuals and families, and appropriates funds for an unspecified number of finance specialist positions to assist with these loans and grants. Vice Chair for the testimony.
Dean Minaconni, HHFTC in support.
We stand in support of this.
Thank you. Mark Porelio, Hawaii Chamber of Commerce in support. Lindsay Garcia, Hawaii Realtors in support. Thank you, Lindsay. Pamela Tempat, Maui Chamber of Commerce in support. Jessica Gaisman, Pacific Housing Assistance Corporation in support. Are there any others, individuals wishing to testify on this matter, 1838? Chair seeing none.
Members, any questions?
Quick question.
Vice Chair, you.
Yeah, what, what, how many units are we looking at, say, if we put like $150 million in this fund?
Well, I guess during our last funding round, we financed 760 units with $142 million.
Wait, 760?
760 units with $142 million. And the cost per unit may be higher now because interest rates are higher. But it would be close to that, in that range.
Okay, thank you.
Members, any other questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to HP 2292. Relating to Affordable Housing Development, this appropriates funds to the Hawaii Housing Finance and Development Corporation for the establishment and hiring of an unspecified number of project management three positions to aid in the development of affordable housing options in the state. Vice Chair for the testimony.
Dean Minaconni, HHFTC in support. Mary Alice Evans, Office of Planning and Sustainable Development. Thank you very much. Any other individuals wishing to testify on this matter, 2292? Chair seeing none.
Members, questions? Vice Chair, you.
Okay, Dean, one more time. How many positions do you think you need to run the program?
We think we would need one project manager position, and this would help with activities on Maui. Also, on Kauai, we have projects up there, as well as, you know, our normal, regular programs that we administer.
Okay, so I was looking at the FIN testimony that was submitted for DBED, and I saw that you guys have eight open positions. That was on the FIN open position spreadsheet. I don't know if that's still current. Is that still current, or?
I think we have about five open positions right now.
And you can't use any of those positions to fill this one, or you need this one in addition?
This would be in addition, yes.
Okay, do you have a plan to fill those other five positions?
We are working on a staffing and needs plan, which I can share.
Okay, okay, thank you, thank you, Chair.
Sorry, a quick follow-up. Are, are any of those vacant positions project management three positions?
Only, well, only one, but that was funded last year and only became available last month. So it's only been vacant for about a month now.
Okay, all right, thank you. Members, further questions? Seeing none. Next item on the agenda is HP 2357. Relating to the Hawaii Housing Finance and Development Corporation, repeals the HHFTC Home Buyers Club Program. Vice Chair for the testimony.
Dean Minaconni, HHFTC in support. Thank you. Dane Wicker, DBED. Thank you, Director. Any other individuals wishing to testify on this matter, 2357? Chair seeing none.
Members, questions? I have a, one question for HHFTC. So this program currently is unfunded, right?
That's correct. It's unfunded and hasn't been utilized for a while.
Okay, and I know the counties have various homebuyer programs. Those are run by nonprofits and funded by HUD?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, thank you. Members, any further questions? Seeing none. Our next item is HP 2413, related to housing. Extends the Hawaii Housing Finance and Development Corporation approval and certification period in which construction or rehabilitation of certain projects under Section 201H 36A5, HRS can qualify for general excise tax exemption and repeals the limitation of the cost to contracting, including the $30 million annual cap on allowable G E T and used tax costs applicable to contracting under Section 201H 36A5, among other things. Vice Chair for the testimony.
Gary Suganuma, DOTAX.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Representatives Josh Michaels, Acting Administrative Rules Officer, on behalf of Director Suganuma. You have our testimony and support. I'd just like to echo the Director's comments from the previous hearing supporting the Governor's Affordable Housing Initiative. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Dean Minaconni, HHFTC in support. Denise Isari Matupara, Office of Housing in support. Chris Delany, PRP.
Aloha, Chair and Committee members. Chris Delany, Pacific Resource Partnership, represent the Carpenters Union and about 250 contractors in the state of Hawaii. In 2017, Act 54 was enacted to provide developers with a program that would assist with overcoming the high construction and then financing costs of building affordable workforce housing, rental housing projects. For 100%, of the units are for families, 140% AMI and below, of which 20% of the units are for families, 80% AMI and below. And this bill actually makes a number of amendments to Act 54, so developers can actually use the tool. Number one is on page four of the bill, it removes a $30 million cap on the G E T exemption, which allows for a larger amount of, and greater flexibility with regards to using the G E T exemption for these types of projects. This is the only G E T exemption that has a cap, as far as I know. Secondly, on page two of the bill, it removes language that prevents a qualified person or firm from using the government financing to help make a project pencil, both direct and indirect financing. I don't know of any other program that has this limitation. When you see projects going through agencies like HHFTC, they are utilizing other types of direct and indirect financing, along with the G E T exemption. The deletion of this provision will allow projects to stack G E T exemptions with other financial tools, including county exemptions and waivers. For example, in 2018, Honolulu enacted ordinance 18-1 for this specific program under 201H 36A5, granting waivers, exemptions related to real property tax, wastewater system facility charges, plan review, building permits, fees, and park dedication without having to go through council, so kind of like by right. So they have this ordinance in place currently. These limits, if these limitations are lifted, the counties can get creative, like Honolulu, and adopt an ordinance that would provide direct and indirect financing for these types of projects in order to get more workforce housing built for the hard-working men and women of Hawaii. And if we don't build our workforce, they'll leave to the continent. And when they do that, we're not only losing our kamaaina and valuable services that they provide, we're also losing tax revenue as well. So I respectfully ask for your support on this measure. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Tom Yamachika, Tax Foundation of Hawaii with comments on Zoom.
Good morning, Chair, members of the committee. This is Jade McMillan, on behalf of Tom Yamachika for the Tax Foundation of Hawaii. We submitted some comments on the measure, and we will just stand on our written. Thank you.
Thank you. Evan Naya. Thank you, Evan. Stephanie Sakamoto, BIA. Tracy Tonaki, DR Horton. Pamela Tempat, Maui Chamber of Commerce in support. Ryan Sekuda, GCA in support. Anna Tui Sosopo, operating engineers in support. Stanford Carr in support. Any other, any other individuals wishing to testify on this matter, 2413? Chair seeing none.
Members, any questions? I have a couple of quick questions for HHFTC. So just for my own clarity, indirect financing would include county waivers on fees?
That's correct. So if a project goes through the 20s process and gets exemptions from fees, then yes, that's an indirect financing.
And then the $30 million cap currently, so that's just kind of first come, first served, as soon as there's $30 million, nobody else can get it?
That's correct.
Okay, and then the contracting-only language, removing that, how would that change? I guess, other than contractors and subcontractors, who is eligible?
I believe under the bill, they would have to basically use contractors that follow prevailing wage.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Maybe a question for Chris, yeah. Just if you could follow up on that, because you folks mentioned in your testimony the importance of removing the contractors-only language. If you could just walk through.
Yeah, so I think if you look at the current law, Section 2237-29, it doesn't have contracting only. It's like planning, design, construction, and lease, too. And then also with the prevailing wage.
And then also with the prevailing wage requirement, this is, you have to meet a prevailing wage requirement, right? However, this is the only part of the Chapter 104 where it could be negotiated, you know, in a collective bargaining agreement, and that would be considered the prevailing wage. So technically, it could go lower than what is the existing prevailing wage currently. And this was put in place, so, you know, when times are tough, you know, union and non-union can negotiate with the contractors to try to make things pencil out, so.
Okay, thanks. Members, any further questions? Seeing none. The next item on the agenda is HB 2550 relating to affordable housing. Establishes the accessory dwelling unit grant program under the Hawaii Housing Finance and Development Corporation to provide grants to eligible homeowners for development costs and certain closing costs associated with the construction of an accessory dwelling unit. Vice Chair for the testimony. Uh, 2550.
Okay. Dean Mina Kani, HSFDC. Thank you. Louis Soliverio, BNF. Anyone else wishing to testify on this matter, 2550? Seeing none, Chair.
Members, any questions? Seeing none. Next item on the agenda, HB 2642 relating to eviction mediation. Beginning November 1st, 2024, extends the period for a notice of termination of a rental agreement, requires landlords to engage in mediation and delay filing an action for summary possession if a tenant schedules or attempts to schedule mediation, and requires landlords to provide specific information, the 10-day calendar notice to tenants. Has a sunset date of November 1st, 2026, and appropriates money. Vice Chair for the testimony.
Kathy Betts, Director, DHS. Jeffrey Crabtree, oh, Judge Crabtree.
Thank you, Chair. Vice Chair, members, stand on our support with one brief comment. The prior version of this bill had an 85% success rate. And that's not just people reaching agreements, it's actually tenants remaining in their homes. That's a very strong number for alternative dispute resolution. And we're happy if we have a rate of 50%. 85% is literally off the charts, so I just ask you to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Susan Kuntz, Office of Housing and Community Development. Amy Assolbe, City and County of Honolulu. Assalbe, thank you. Okay. Tracy Wolken, individual in support. Lori Takuchi, Mediation Centers of Hawaii in support. Michael Guligich, Pulehu Town, Townhouse Association in support. Arjuna Heim, Hawaii Appleseed.
Arjuna Heim, on behalf of Hawaii Appleseed. We stand in our testimony and support, but also want to implore this committee to include Part Two of HB 1439, which is actually a rent relief attachment to mediation program. Without rent relief, mediation program is essentially just kicking the can down the road to either a self eviction or formalized eviction. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Lee, Hawaii Housing Affordability Coalition in support. Betty Lou Larson, Catholic Charity Hawaii, I thought I saw her, in support.
Well, hello, Chair and Vice Chair. I'm Betty Lou Larson with Catholic Charity Hawaii. And we feel that in order to address homelessness, you have to address prevention. And this is a big thing, 2,500 evictions in our state, and this puts all of those families at risk of homelessness. So we feel this is, as mentioned, has been a very successful program, but it was successful because there was also rent relief attached to those eviction cases. So otherwise, we feel that this almost would create more trauma for both the tenant and the landlord, just extending it on, and, you know, then finally, an eviction comes. So we think the rent relief would really be the key to not only help the tenant, but help landlord. It has to be a two-way street here. So we feel this would be effective, and as mentioned, it has been effective in the past. So we appreciate your addition and your consideration of this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Betty. Thank you so much. Julie Mitchell, Kui Kani Mediation Center in support. Lindsay Garcia, Hawaii Realtor with comments.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Lindsay Garcia from Hawaii Realtors. Apologize for the late testimony. We do support expeditious pre-litigation mediation, although we do have comments. First, we would humbly recommend that the measure also require tenants to participate in mediation as well as the landlords, just because we want both parties at the table, and that we note that this bill extends the notice period. So we would, we would actually recommend setting a fixed mediation completion deadline just to ensure that the mediation does occur expeditiously. And we do echo the comments that others have made, that rental relief is a very, very important part of this program, and that if tenants are struggling to pay rent, mediation alone won't be enough to address these issues. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Angelina Mercado, Hawaii State Coalition Against Domestic Violence in support. Nicole Wu, HCAN in support. Michael Cruz, individual in support. Charles Rapun, individual in support. Will Karin, individual in support. Giuseppe Leone, individual in support. Barbara Polk, individual in support. Joy Schuenecker, individual in support. Any other individuals wishing to testify on this matter, 2642? Chair seeing none.
Members, questions? Vice Chair, you.
Judge Crabtree, I'd love to ask you questions on the other side of the table. Can't turn this opportunity down.
I will try. It's the second day on the job.
I think you heard the other testifier saying that there's a rent relief component that's necessary. Do you have a figure about how much that contributed to? I know you touted 85% as a number, but do you think that that was the driving factor in 85%? Or are we just, the program itself is the driving factor?
I'm sure it contributed. I can't give you any numbers, but, you know, the Appleseed Foundation did a detailed breakdown on this. I'd be happy to review that again and see if I can find those numbers for you and send them to you today.
Okay. Okay. And then my last comment is, I, you know, I've had to do landlord-tenant claims before, and a lot of times, there was a mediator there, you know, at the Second Status Conference. Is there any, like, help on the judiciary part that on, at the return hearing, a mediator or a judge is present and helps to mediate the case on the spot, right after they appear, so they don't have to come back and they can resolve it that day?
Short answer, I'm sorry, I don't know. I think the intent is to mostly use the mediation centers. I believe they have staffing at that point. I'm not positive.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Members, further questions? I have a question for Lindsay. So you asked for a specific timeframe, which I think is warranted in some capacity, but right now, the language of the bill does say the landlord shall only file a summary possession proceeding after the expiration of 20 calendar days from the date of the tenant's receipt of the 10 calendar day notice. To me, my read is that they would have the authority after 20 calendar days, kind of that would be the end date. Do you think it needs further clarification from there?
We'd be happy to take a closer look at this.
Okay.
But we appreciate the, you know, the intent to, to try to at least encourage resolution and mediation. We want everybody to come to the table and have a fruitful discussion.
Okay. And then, sorry, so the other part is, right now, from the language of the bill, you don't feel like it actually requires the tenant to come to mediation?
I believe it's probably implied, but it's actually not explicitly written.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. And then a question for Arjuna. Because I know Appleseed's done a lot of work on this front. If the program does not include rent relief, do you think it can still be beneficial? Or is, is the rent relief really the part that makes it beneficial?
I'm not a mediator. However, I'm not sure how beneficial it could be without rent relief. If the majority of the issue is lacking rental payment or subsequent utilities payment, if you come to the table and you just have mediation without rent relief, then the end result will be an eviction, so I do think it's necessary.
All right, thank you. Members, any further questions? Rep Onishi.
Yeah. For Judge Crabtree? So you state, you stated that there was 85% success with tenants remaining in that rental unit?
Correct.
How long is that going to be good for?
Well, I mean, it's, I think that really depends on a lot of different specific circumstances. I really don't think I could give you an honest answer that would apply across the Is there anything in particular I could try to address? I'd be glad to.
Well, I mean, the rent relief funding, right, is gonna run out of money unless the counties continue to infuse more money into it, which I think, I believe the city has recently. But without that support, don't they end up in the same situation where they may not be making enough money for that particular unit? You know?
I absolutely understand the logic of that, and I certainly don't doubt what you heard from the other witness. But having been in the trial courts for almost 10 years, you have no chance of a resolution if you don't talk with each other.
Oh, I would agree.
It's an important piece of the puzzle. I mean, you can show up with money, and the landlord could still want to evict you for whatever reason.
Right.
They want somebody better, or their friend wants to move in. So just getting the parties together and to share information and what each side wants is, I think it's an important part of it. I mean, if there's money too, great. But I don't think money alone will solve the problem either. I think it really is a combination.
Yeah, and that's where I think we don't have information as to, you know, these 85% success and the 15% that were not successful. What are these in terms of circumstances of why they were successful or why they were unsuccessful? You know? We're hearing testimony that we got to put money into this, right? It's not just the program itself that's successful. It's the funding that's from other programs that comes along that makes this a success, you know?
I understand. I understand, I can't dispute that. I just, I want to, I don't take anything away from that, but I want to also emphasize the other end, like I did before. Just the, the act of the parties getting together in a mediation helps. Now, exactly how much, I can't tell you. I am going to look in more depth at the Appleseed report, and I will get back to you today, even if it's only to say I didn't find anything. But I'm hopeful there's data in there that will help answer these questions.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Members, further questions? Reconvening, the Housing Committee hearing for Friday. So, first up, HB 1760 relating to state finances. We are going to defect the date here, and we're going to adopt HHFDC's proposed amendment from testimony regarding that six-month timeframe and pass. HD went out with those amendments. Vice Chair for the vote.
Members, voting on HB 1760, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Representative Keela is excused. Representative Kitagawa?
Aye.
Representative Miyake?
Aye.
Representative Onishi?
Aye.
Representative Todd is excused. Representative Matsumoto?
Aye.
Chair, your measure is adopted.
Thank you. Next up, HB 1760 relating to housing. My only proposed amendment is to defect the date. Oh, sorry. Members, comments or questions? All right, seeing none. Vice Chair for the vote.
Members, voting on HB 1761, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments, noting the excused absences of Representative Keela and Representative Todd, who will be noted excused for the remainder of this agenda. Are there any members choosing to vote no or with reservations? Chair seeing none, your measure is adopted.
Next, item HB 2514 relating to teacher housing. And let me just start off by saying, I think that this is really important. Our, one of the tragic manifestations of our housing shortage is the impact it has on teachers and leading to chronic teacher shortages statewide and the spiraling ramifications of that. I think at the end of the day, it is a housing shortage, and we need more housing to solve it, but in the interim, certainly, we need to figure out ways to help give a boost to teachers to afford housing. My concern with this is, stems from HHFDC's concerns over potential impacts from fair housing laws and HHFDC's ability to implement this program. Given that, though, DOE, as we discussed, does have existing statutory authority and an existing revolving fund dedicated to teacher housing. So I believe that this is more appropriately put under DOE's purview. So my recommended amendment would be to move it to the purview of DOE, to include the voucher program as an authorized use of DOE's existing housing, teacher housing revolving fund, to change the appropriation in the bill from the general fund to the teacher's revolving fund, to change the word. It references state median income in the bill, we'll change that to area median income. We will, technical amendments for clarity and defect the date. Members, comments or questions?
Chair, just want to say thank you for working on this bill, and we're still kind of disappointed in DOE for not coming and kind of explaining what they're doing with teacher housing. It's a pertinent issue, and I think we got some valuable testimony on how important vouchers are, so I appreciate that testimony. I hope DOE can implement the program.
Yeah, and this is going to go on to two more committees here, and certainly, I think there needs to get more work and get DOE to the table, as Vice Chair said, so hopefully that can occur. Members, any further comments, questions? Vice Chair for the vote.
Members, voting on HB 2514, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Are there any members voting no or with reservations? Chair seeing none, your measure is adopted.
Next up, HB 1833 relating to the Rental Housing Revolving Fund. This is the appropriates money for tier-two housing. My recommendation on this is simply to defect the date. Let me just double-check. Sorry, one second. I'm sorry, we need to affect the date, and we're also going to change the date on, on page three, line 16, to June 30th, 2025. Members, any comments or questions? Seeing none. Vice Chair for the vote.
Members, voting on HB 1833, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Are there any members choosing to vote no or with reservations? Chair seeing none, your measure is adopted.
All right, next item, HB 2292 relating to affordable housing development. This would appropriate funding for, for new positions. I personally recognize the need for HHFDC to be fully staffed. I, I do want a little more clarity on the positions and what they will be used for, so we'll be just referring this until next Wednesday, when we can sort of get further clarity on the positions. So we'll defer to, to our next agenda, 10:00 AM next Wednesday. Next item is HB 2357 relating to the Hawaii Housing Finance and Development Corporation repealing the Home Buyer Club Program. We will simply, my proposal, just affecting the date and moving this out. Members, questions or comments? Vice Chair for the vote.
Members, voting on HB 2357, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Are there any members choosing to vote no or with reservations? Chair seeing none, your measure is adopted.
All right, next is HB 2413. The G E exemption, removing the $30 million cap for 201H 36A5 projects. My recommendation is to defect the date and technical amendments for consistent My recommendation is to defect the date and technical amendments for consistency and clarity. Members, questions or comments? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Members, voting on HB 2413, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Are there any members choosing to vote no or with reservations? Chair, your measure is adopted.
HB 2550 relating to affordable housing. This would create a accessory dwelling unit grant program under HHFTC. I will say, I introduce this bill along with my Vice Chair here. I would love to be able to give out money to ADU construction. I recognize, though, in a tight-budget year, that is a hard sell. We do have a number of ADU financing bills that are working their way through right now. I would prefer to sort of focus my own efforts on a loan program, so we are going to go ahead and defer this bill. Next on the agenda is 2642 relating to eviction mediation. This, beginning November 1st, 2024, extends the period for a notice of termination of a rental agreement and requires mediation. My suggestions would be to defect the date and to adopt the Realtors' proposed amendment that the tenant has to participate in mediation and to pass out an HD1. And I will comment that I recognize that the rental relief component is, in a perfect world, we would be able to include it in there. It seems like that is very necessary in a world where our, you know, where our budget was looking better. I think that we could make a strong push for that. My fear is, by tagging it onto this bill, that it will die for essentially the second year in a row. So from my read, it seems better to go forward with the mediation program rather than nothing at all, so I think we're gonna, I would like to push for that. And if you go through CPC and finance and they think that we could add on the rental relief, then that'd be great. But for right now, I feel comfortable passing it forward without that in order to give it the highest likelihood of passing. Members, oh, no. Members, any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Members, voting on HB 2642, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Are there any members choosing to vote no or with reservations? Chair, seeing none, your measure is adopted.
All right, seeing no further business. Thank you, everybody, for being here. Thank you.